All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. The mayor, Matthew Bryant, is on Skype with us, but he's not present. So we decided that somebody needs to be there in person to bang a gavel if y'all get out of line. But on that note, would you please join me? Could we have a roll call first, Winnie?
Before the flag salute?
Call the order roll call, okay. Please join me in the flag salute.
Meeting to order.
Call meeting to order. Ladies and sir, been a while. Commander Bruce, would you please join the lead of fledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We're in the public.
All right, Ms. Winnie, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Here.
Mayor Bryant.
Present.
Okay. We have a special presentation and announcement from the Amtrak discussion with Alex Calvin. Are you here? All right. Go ahead, sir. Take it away.
I am here. Can you guys see me? Okay. Mayor Bryant, members of the council, Alex Calvin with Amtrak. It is a pleasure to be with you. Been a little while since I've been done here. And in fact, and when I first started with Amtrak in 2011, I had the distinct pleasure of meeting Rita Green at the depot. And it was one of my first meetings. And I remember it like it was yesterday. And it became very clear to me just how important the depot is to the community and to you. So thank you for your support. Thank you for your continuing support. I actually wanted to join you this evening as we have received a letter from you. So thank you for writing. And there were a couple of things in the letter that I wanted to address. So if it's okay with you, I just sort of wanted just to get into it. I know there were some questions around the station. And I just wanted to let you know that there's some good news there. Amtrak is actually in the middle of working through a proposal to do extensive work at the station. And some of the things they will be doing is there will be a new platform with lights and a snowmelt system. We're going to be doing new ADA parking, striping and signage. There's going to be an interior renovation to the station waiting room and the bathroom. ADA signage, some modifications to plumbing, light fixtures and counters. Right now, the plan is in review with Union Pacific. I think, I don't think we got, we have received the comments back just yet. Assuming everything goes as planned and assuming everything's approved, we are looking to begin construction spring of 2022. So that's on the station side. And let me pause there to see if there are any questions.
We have a question from Councilmember Casey.
Hi, thank you for coming tonight for a talk. I think it's really great that you were able to meet with us and give us some of that update. I was hoping, you know, it's really important, Councilmember Art here can say that the depot's location near and within our historic downtown is really important. And I'm wondering if there can be any sensitivity to the design of the interior or some kind of collaboration between the city and Amtrak to include historic elements or pieces into that to make our stop unique and to kind of be cohesive with our historic values for that downtown area.
So that's a great question. So typically, what would happen is once we receive comments from the host railroads, we would then provide a briefing to the city, to city staff. And that's typically the point where we'll go through our plan and sort of take your input. And we actually have folks that are part of the team that deal with historic preservation. So I suspect that discussion will happen, so stay tuned for that.
Thank you.
That is a good question. Do you have a question, Bruce?
I do. I do have one brief question. I know it's been a headline in the new infrastructure bill that's being heavily debated Capitol Hill in Washington. A portion, a large portion of those would go to sustaining and improving Amtrak. Are these improvements tied to that or are they a sure thing at this point?
No, those improvements are not tied to that. We, I will, I will tell you that we are taking ADA compliance seriously. And this has been part of the sort of a nationwide effort to address these issues at stations. Now, there is, there is more funding in the infrastructure bill that is correct. But as it relates to Dunsmere, it's not tied to that.
Are there any, if it passes in the near future, you see any other opportunities that we should be aware of or look forward to?
Well, certainly there, I think there are going to be a couple of opportunities as it relates to the infrastructure bill. Let me just pull up the numbers here really quickly. So in total, there's $66 billion for passenger and freight rail. So that includes $12 billion for inner-city passenger rail corridor expansion and $16 billion for Amtrak national network. So essentially, the Coast Starlight is part of the national network. So technically, yes, there are opportunities there. But it's sort of hard to really predict what's going to happen at this point in Congress. So it's, you know, I don't want to give you a exact number of what that may look like. There's also some, some funding that's going to be available around safety, around crossings. So that's definitely something that I would recommend keeping an eye out.
Thank you so much.
Peter, do you have anything?
He was going to switch, Alex was going to switch off to the station and on to another topic.
That's what I'm looking for.
I have a number of comments.
Okay. Go ahead and proceed, Alex.
Sure. So the, the other theme I picked up from your letter is this general question of expansion. And the one thing I would say is that as it relates to regional expansion, it's one, one issue to be mindful of is that any corridor development that's under 750 miles is required to be a state-supported route. So to the extent that you're sort of thinking about additional service, that vision really should be driven by the state and more on a regional level. And one example that I wanted to mention to you is that there's some discussion around adding passenger train service into Chico and potentially Redding. And it's really early on in the conversation through the, through the San Joaquin Joint Power Authority. And that's, that's, that's an initiative that I think is worth taking a look at. Because right now, Amtrak does not have plans to add additional service into Dunsmere. And sort of being part of a long-distance network, your, your option is to really work with the state and local agencies to see if there's an opportunity to expand state-supported service because it would have to be under 750 miles. So I just want to put it out there because I, while I recognize the desire to have more service and definitely appreciate the support. It's sort of, we are limited to what pre Section 209 allows us to do. So I just wanted to mention, to briefly cover that. And so the, the group that's taken a look at the expansion into Chico and potentially into Redding is the North Valley Passenger Rail Plan. So that's, I believe that's in Butte County, Cog.
Yeah, Alex. Council, any questions?
Are you going to do a public comment?
I will.
I only have comments. Why don't you go before?
Okay, okay. Before I open up to public comment, Alex. Sir, I want to thank you for reminding me and mentioning my friend Rita Green. She was our worker and thank you. All right, at this time, I'll open up the public comment. Anybody has any questions for the gentleman from the rear row? You had your hand raised, sir. That's what I was doing. Come on.
So my name is Alex also. I rode Amtrak around the United States when I was 20 years old. Spent two months on the rails and it changed my world. So Coast Starlight was one of the nicest legs of the journey. Simple, small question. You mentioned a number of projects. I think in the size of projects. But one thing I noticed about our station here is right next to Sacramento Street, there's some stairs that lead down from Sacramento Street to the station. They're about eight feet wide. There's two flights, just like uphill flight and down flight. There's Blackberry lines going entirely across one of the flights of steps. So my question is, is there any issues or funding? Is there any effort to do landscaping or grounds and maintaining of the bushes and banks and landscaping around for aesthetic reasons and also sacred reasons? I mean, this is a good matchup, but Blackberry was growing across, entirely across the whole flight. We, we, we.
Thanks for reminding me. Yeah, we, we, you make your comment, then the other people make their comment.
Oh, it's a comment, no question.
And then they will respond. But was that your comment or your question?
That was my question. I was hoping for a response.
Well, you'll get one in a minute unless then everybody asks your questions.
Oh, everybody.
We don't, we don't do the back and forth with the same time.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I promise you'll get a response. Just bear with me. Are there any other questions? No? Do I have anybody online?
I don't see anybody with their hands raised. If you'd like to make a comment and you're on Zoom, go to the participants tab and raise your hand.
Do I have any? Any hands raised?
No hands are raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, at this time, I'll close the podium to public comment. Alex, would you like to respond to landscaping? You have anything to say to us on that question?
You know, at this point, I don't. Typically, that conversation would happen as the plans are shared with your staff. So I suspect my, you know, my next steps would be to work with our team to find a time where, when we can connect with your staff and start talking through all of the elements of the project. So it's, so it's not, I mean, it's typical to have these conversations then. And it's definitely something that we would need to hear from the city about as well.
Now that we've got that brought to our attention, I'm sure that our city manager and our city staff will address and take a look at that. We're not into safety hazards, no. But we also want to show off our, our, our things that we have. And I, that's part of the heritage of going to be all shared, so on that note, we'll take care of that. Okay? Is there anything else that you have for us, sir, Alex?
No, just, just again, thank you for your support. And I mean, Dunsmere is an important stop for us. So we're going to make sure to address those needs you guys.
Councilman Art has a couple of questions for you. Go ahead, be.
I simply want to echo the mayor's comment that when you came to Dunsmere and you met with Rita Green.
You know, you send this?
As much as we pride ourselves on being a rural town. Have a history of passenger terminal. There's a huge amount of not just economic pride, but community pride. And so I am very happy to hear the grace you have in responding to a little community like Dunsmere with the last Amtrak stop in California, that Amtrak is going to continue to partner with us. I think you're absolutely right. Expansion of service, especially in the nation-state of California. Amtrak is co-located with Interstate 5. Interstate 5 is going to be the electric highway north-south. And I hope California improves passenger rail from a backhoe remaining service to Coast Starlight into commuter rail, high-speed rail. The rail itself is very important. And for Amtrak to continue to swap the windows of our doors, I was very, very grateful. The last comment, looking forward, is I hope at some point, if you come back to Dunsmere or not, you can take a look at the evolution of our current rail terminal from what it was in the days of Southern Pacific to what it is today under Union Pacific. Union Pacific owns a great part of the acreage that we're talking about in the center of our town and historic history. We are trying to establish partnerships with Union Pacific. If we get a partnership with the state and with Amtrak, couldn't we bring back the historic fountain that used to grace the terminal in the days of Alexander Dunsmere from the live trout? And it was a fountain brought from Europe. And there were benches. Even in its current state, we routinely end up as one of the 100 best rural Amtrak stops in the United States. And I hope in the years ahead, as the country and the localities rebuild passenger rail, we can all work together. But I appreciate your dedication and your response.
Any other questions or comments? If you have you.
Thank you so much for attending to us. I look forward to hearing from you on a somewhat regular basis. I think the train station's an incredibly important anchor of our town. I'd love for it to continue. It's essentially part of the founding of our town. So I'd love to see this going forward for generations to come.
Mayor Bryant or Vice, Vice Mayor Kaiser, we did have a comment from Tim Holt. Tim, if you can unmute yourself.
We've already moved out of public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sir, I want to thank you for your time. I look forward to, I look forward to progress, spiritually, that way. All right? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. At this time, I'll open up the podium to public comment. I'll remind everybody, you've got three minutes. And these are items that are not on the agenda tonight. Jim Sprigle, 2601 North Old State Road, Mount Shasta. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, on the record, thank the council for their enthusiastic support of the Patty Hill Memorial Tree. Her granddaughter's getting married in Dunsmere tomorrow. Family members, as we speak, are flooding into town. She has over 70 RCTs from across the country. It's going to be a big event and we're hoping to get a number of them down for the tree planting. I went down there today and I didn't see any markings as to where the pipes or gas are underground. Yes. I tried to hit the ground with my shovel. You need a pickaxe at least. I say plastic axe and dynamite. The ground is so hard there. It's really not shovelable, shovelable. I'm wondering if on a temporary basis, if we could just, as per the original plan, stick it in the planter. We can move the tree out of that planter in a year or two. The roots will not go that far. That'll, you know, something you can use this Christmas, maybe next Christmas. And then we can still have the ceremony tomorrow. That ground down there is, I don't know how they planted those stuff, but it's really hard. But I want to go on the record to thank you guys. Patty loved this town like, like as her own child. She loved the children. She loved the work you did with the kids in this town. She was an old friend of Peter's and loved him like a brother. Having a memorial tree for the beautiful metal and gray plaque to go to base. It's going to be nice. I just wanted to find out if the trees are picked up yet or are going to be picked up tomorrow. And I don't know where we can, I'm listening, get the back and forth, but maybe when I sit down and she needs to say, where, shall we stick it in that one other planter for now? It'll fit like a glove and we can, the trees can be moved next year. It'll keep them for the winter and we can transplant it next spring. If we get a backhoe, or if we get a backhoe down there tomorrow, middle of the day, pop some holes in it in five minutes and be done. Use some pine soil. But that, I tried to shovel. I must kill myself. It's like, who's that? But on to the record, thank you, Joanna, for valuing your time and your expertise. Thank you to the council for your loving support for Patty's tree. That's why I want to on the record.
What tree tomorrow is?
Patty's plant for six o'clock.
You want to come help with the shovel?
Shovel will work. Thanks, sir.
And you, sir. Well done.
Thanks. Anybody else, please?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Tony Baldwin. My wife Laura and I own two homes here in town. One on Black Fly Avenue and one on Shearer. And we operate part-time.
Sorry, is this about, is this short-term?
It is about short-term, but it's not about the fees that I generated tonight. It's about a past regulation change. We do own those homes. We operate part-time, short-term rental. We also stay there every chance we get. We love this town. I was born about 50 miles from here in Cotland. We have both been to this area throughout our 40-year marriage, every chance we've ever had. Lived in the area about 40 years ago. Without, without, I didn't think we'd take this long, but we're, we're, we're on our way. We do love this town. We love our interactions so far with the city, the staff, various departments and agencies that we've worked with to get these houses up and running. We've been licensed operators for about three years of the homes. The, these homes are live retirement in this way. They are, we're not a big multinational corporation coming in here to grab up land and bang. And they, we have two sons, therefore we have two homes. It's easy now. They'll, they'll cast down all their, we're not here to, to buy them and rent them and sell them. The, the reason I'm here tonight is because we were being aware of the changes that were passed a few months ago by, by council regarding regulations governing short-term rentals. And we were both very disappointed that we learned about those after the fact. When I called and talked to staff at City Hall, they reminded me that notices about those communities have been mostly on the website and public notices. And, you know, just being part-time residents here, they, those notices did not reach our attention. And nor did they reach the attention of a lot of other folks who are, who are in the same level that we're in. So, you know, it was disappointing to know that those regulations that passed with what we feel really probably wasn't a complete presentation of the impact to the specific group of owners like us, part-time owners, part-time residents. And some of them frankly seem punitive. They seem a bit discriminatory. We've got regulations that apply to, to my home. And specifically, when I have guests that are paying guests. But those same safety and residency limit and parking and other limitations don't apply to my neighbor next door, whether he's an owner or she is an owner or whether they're long-term renters. Only, only a short-term rental owner operator's and guests are impacted. When I, when I expressed that disappointment to the staff, they also told me to come here and share my feelings. So that's what I've done tonight. I wanted to let you know that we've talked to several other short-term rental operators.
Your three minutes is up, sir.
I probably have another minute. I can, I can continue this next meeting or I would ask to hear your comments to your.
I'll give you one more minute.
No, we can be really, we can be people. So if you give him one more minute, this one is tonight.
All right.
You have to be fair. But you can drop off your written comments.
I wrote them in the car on the way here, so I can type them up there.
Let's wait for the last of the public comment and see if anybody can respond to what you have to say.
Okay. I, I just would like.
Thank you for, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
We're in charge with all the owners. We're getting organized. Our voice will be heard as these things go forward.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else next? Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Is there anybody else for public comment?
Yeah, somebody on Zoom has their raised hand, Steven Bryant. If this is for public comment, you can unmute.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person with you. And although you can't see me, it's great to see all of you. It's Steven Bryant with the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. And I just wanted to let the council and the community know we're having our annual free community event coming up on October 23rd, Saturday at 12:30, the Harvest Festival in the Dunsmere Community Garden. And we'll have free arts and crafts, children's activities, raffle prizes, a pie contest. We'll be doing a celebration of life for one of our own dear Dunsmere Alexander Award winners and powers. We're dedicating a portion of the garden to her and installing a beautiful granite bench that was purchased. That'll be engraved that we're working on the foundation for tomorrow. And we hope that most of you could come and join us on that day and celebrate Empowers and the Dunsmere Community and the Dunsmere Community Garden. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that. October 23rd, Saturday at 12:30. And if anybody makes, if anybody's a good pie maker, please make a pie and enter our contest. Top three winners get a prize.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Ms. Winnie?
I'm not seeing anybody else on Zoom.
All right, at this time, I'll close the podium to public comment. I'm going to ask council, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to ask Rico. Does anybody have anything to say in response to Tony Baldwin's comments and public comment tonight?
What was his comment?
Did they have a raise up here?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
Well, we're a very small city. And for controversial issues in a very small city, what we try to do is get different voices. So do we want marijuana in our community or not? It was two years with a citizen committee, members of the planning commission, members of the city council. Did we get it exactly right out of the box? No. For the short-term housing industry, we didn't say anything. We formed a Brown Act committee. We had what we hoped were representatives of the whole spectrum in our whole city. Whether you're the neighbor not renting out or you're the neighbor that is renting out. And so I think my hope was you are part of the conversation, whether it's the fees we're looking at tonight, the reasonableness of the regulations. We weighed heavily on trucking. Trucking, all of the communities around Lake Tahoe were ahead of us. But we all feel like we need to balance interests and we will do our best. But thank you for being not quiet, but part of the community.
Not in terms of conversation, man.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Council and staff comments. On the start, we don't have Todd's not up there?
No.
You late? You got anything for us tonight?
No, I'll leave now. Good to go.
Good to go. Okay.
Dave.
Yes, sir.
Has an announcement for us. He was recently promoted and I believe he's the new sheriff's office liaison for Contract Cities.
Adam Christie, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me?
Congratulations. Welcome to the party.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just to go over a couple of things that are new going on with our office right now, just for the time being. Like, like the mayor mentioned, I was just newly promoted to lieutenant. So I'm going to be the Dunsmere Patrol Commander for the time being. We have a crisis going on, which you guys all know about, which is illegal marijuana grows. So to help combat that area, the sheriff has elected to basically promote Sergeant Kubowitz into a position to help run a team. So to help combat that area, the sheriff has elected to, uh, basically promote, uh, Sergeant Kubowitz into a position to help, um, run a team that will help combat that marijuana situation. So for the time being, he's going to be, uh, out dealing with illegal marijuana grows. Um, we don't know how long that's going to last. So I'm going to be, myself and Lieutenant Wetstein will be the, uh, voice for Dunsmere and South County. So if you guys have any questions or concerns, uh, you can go through us. Um, and hopefully it won't last forever and you guys will have either sa- uh, deputy, or sorry, Sergeant Kubowitz back or, uh, another sergeant assigned to the city of Dunsmere.
All right.
Matthew, what?
No, sorry. I was jumping in there. Go for it, big guy.
All right. Well, thank you, Evan. While I got you here, do you have any stats for us?
I don't have the stats for, uh, last month. Um, but I will get on that, uh, this week hopefully and, uh, get back to you guys, uh, with those.
All right, thank you, sir. And again, congratulations.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. Now it's council's turn, ladies first.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I'll be very quick. Um. Uh, Jason Ledbetter from Siskiyou County sent an email that finds us that on October sixteenth, they will have the free household hazardous waste event up at the Blackview Champ Transfer Station. Um, there will be, there is a whole host of items that they can take. Um, just really quick, some of the accepted items that are free. Um, acids and effervies, there are small spray cans, uh, mercury devices, paint, paint thinners, different things like that. That's just a small little snippet of the list that they'll take for free now. Um, and again, that's going to be from nine AM to one PM on Saturday, October sixteenth, up at the Blackview Transfer Station. And I'll forward this to the cities that we can post on the website if people would like more information. Um, outside of that, um, I really don't have a huge update. I was trying to look for when our next solid waste meeting is. Do you remember the date off the top of your head? I was scrambling for.
It's next Thursday, isn't it?
Uh, for solid waste?
Oh, no.
Yeah. Um, so I will get that and, uh, we have that meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks that I believe will be posted on the city website, that announcement for solid waste. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Um, we, uh, the Union Pacific, uh, is, the engineers are going to be meeting with, uh, environmental and hospitalists with the trails, uh, to go over the engineering plans that were approved and probably tighten up a couple of other options. So hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have more to share on, you know, next desk.
Yes. Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to save you for last, is that okay?
Uh, whatever you'd like to, yes.
Okay, Peter, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Frazai. Uh, I have, uh, three items. The last time I made public comments, I was frustrated with the city's loan programs and the inability of some of the small businesses to access those loan programs. I am happy to report that Victor Martin and Pops has been declared eligible and he is now working at the county.
Goodness, you're the better, uh. Yeah, that's right. Congratulations.
Um, as, as a citizen and a council member, I received my proposition two eighteen notice, public notice of proposed water and sewer rate changes. And I read it. I don't know if you read it or you read it or you read it or any of the citizens read it. But what I've written in the corner is this is a bad notice. And the reason I say that is when you get to the sewer rate study, it says absolutely nothing about the city council vote to take a half a million dollars from our water fund and stick it in our sewer fund. So I urge you to read the notice and see if it looks transparent and fair to the taxpayers in your opinion. But I, you know, the city having already been sued with Prop two eighteen laws, I am really disappointed in whoever thought this was adequate notice as to what the city is doing with water and sewer. My third item is in Winston Peak where there's an article, Veterans Parade in Etna is a Bill. Our sister city of Etna is going to celebrate its twentieth Veterans Parade on Saturday, November the sixth. Rotary is helping, other people are helping, and it's still my wish, Mr. Mayor, that the city of Dunsmere have a Veterans Parade and hot dogs and beer as well. We get to that hole, a, a short parade to the cemetery, a short remembrance of veterans. And then if you go back and have hot dogs and beer at the community center or whatever it is, it's November. Uh, but I would certainly like to make that a reality for the city that says they honor veterans.
I'll do everything I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bruce?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I would like to point out, this is kind of like half between now and, and community reports, but we did come up with a date and a time for the town hall for the rate studies, for the rate, uh, Prop two eighteen. It's going to be, um, next Wednesday, I'm sorry, next Thursday at six PM. Next Thursday at six PM. Uh, the one question I have is, um, the proposal as it stands is to have it in here. Um, I'm kind of concerned about that. Um, I guess in terms of the amount of people we can expect to show up, it might be okay. Uh, if we decide to go with it in here, I would like to have it so that the camera is, you know, looking at the person who's talking and because nobody's going to be here, it's going to be to the public. We're presenting to the public. So I'd like to make sure that whatever we have makes a good presentation to the people so we can get as clear as we can about the information. So I'll work with, uh, Blake and the staff to make sure we get that. But what are your thoughts on here over the community building?
I. I won't be here when it comes to announcements.
I'm, I'm saying again, the major purpose of this is to take the people who have put it on, which in this case will be myself and, uh, Mr. Ruder, and we'll be presenting to the public the information.
I think it's an outstanding idea.
Well.
What did you see in the original notice?
Do you have an original notice on where it was going to be held?
That would be next Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah. It's out front here on the website?
And it's already.
No, I mean, like where did you say that I knew it was going to be?
It'll be, you know.
It would be here and on the Zoom.
Yeah, I would just have here.
Okay, we're all fine with here then? I'll work it.
I mean, is that scary to you with the Zoom? You have the Zoom setup here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
I just want to make sure we have a camera that's pointing to the person who's talking because we're just showing the slide the whole time. It's going to be, you know, I'll, I'll work it.
Work it.
Work it. Uh, the other thing I want to bring up has to do with short-term rentals. Um, I, I do want to reemphasize that the process, though you may not have seen it, I think was the process where we tried our best to get all the various viewpoints together. Um, one of the things that I think most of us are, are really most concerned about is, is that, um, short-term rentals tend to decrease community participation in the sense that you're, you're an example. There's no way to get the information. Um, so maybe forming some sort of a local group would be a good way to, to do that and, and, and form like an association or something. Uh, but I think the, the larger challenge is something I've been thinking about and it kind of feeds into this moment, is the idea that recognizing the fact that there are a group of people like yourselves who, who have their home here for a reason, not just to make money, um, is to find a way to, to more, uh, deeply bring them into the community, you know, perhaps on, on, once a month, on a Saturday or something, there's a get-together where people can come in. But the point that I have when I'm trying to, for instance, get the, uh, what's it, the neighborhood watch going and getting community involvement and all the different things that go on, that's really going to be as a community feel, you know, the most pain, if you will, from the dispersed community that you all represent. So all I'm trying to say is, is that maybe going forward, we can find a way to deepen the relationship between folks like yourself and, and make that part of the community. So I, I advise you to keep the communication going, but realize I think we're all trying our best to, to make it happen. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and go before the mayor. Um, I, I want to reiterate right now what Councilwoman Lucchese said, that we have a free hazardous waste. That means you give away all your paint, your thinners, all your, everything. And that's going to be October sixteenth at Blackview Toy.
Transfer.
Transfer station. Uh, ninety-one. Uh, I encourage everybody to take advantage of that. That's, that's, that's a big thing. Um. Peter? I'm going to call you a break. And I have a, I, I won't be here at the next meeting unless, I'll, I'll be zooming in maybe. But, uh, next Thursday I have, uh, my hernia mesh is coming out, so I got to have some surgery done. And but, um, if I can, I can. If I can't, please understand it's called medication I hope you got and I don't want to be feeling no pain, so that, that's my situation. Now, council, we have the Lola Dinner next Wednesday night. And working with the production company and the film, Shasta Film Commission, uh, on our recent adventure making a film here in town. I met this wonderful lady named Sabrina. She's the film commissioner for Shasta, from the Shasta Film Commission. And I invited her to come to Lola Dinner so that she can introduce herself to all the communities of Siskiyou County so that we can be making car commercials in the, in the, down the road to Etna or Jell-O commercials in the cloud. Whatever, it's a way to, you know, enhance the potential for Siskiyou County to make more money off of movies. We have the most beautiful country in the world and I'm trying to help her take advantage of it and promote it. And the situation is now I found out today, there's expedite my surgery, I have to be there Wednesday night, the threat for surgery on Thursday morning. So I'm not going to be able to be her date or her escort to introduce her to people. So I'm hoping that one of you guys would help me out, Peter. She would love you and I appreciate it. Her name is Sabrina and I'll make all the contacts.
Dave, that means you're not going to get to be in that shepherd's pie.
You're damn right I'm not getting shepherd's pie. Anyway, so, uh, I, I thank you. This is very important to me, to Sabrina, and I think to, uh, economic development of Siskiyou County, I mean, with the potential of more films and more commercials being made here. Um, I know that the last one, the city of Dunsmere, we did pretty good. Our hotels are happy, our grocery stores sold a lot of stuff. Um, the restaurants were extremely happy. Uh, so, and I thank you for, for doing that. Um, if, the other thing is I want to remember, remind everybody, tomorrow night at six o'clock, please come out and join us to celebrate the life of Patty Hill and plant a frigging tree. We'll get it back or whatever we got to do, we make it happen. But we're going to plant a tree tomorrow night at six o'clock. Um, congratulations on the wedding if you're out there and, uh, I look forward to being a big part of it, so I'll be there. Mr. Mayor, I understand that you, you're down there and you have some exciting announcements for us. I look forward to it. The floor is all yours, sir.
Okay, uh, well, I don't know about exciting, but moderately good news. Um, I, um, as most of you know, but some may not know, I had the honor of representing Dunsmere at the, uh, Cal Cities Conference, formerly the League of California Cities. Um, it was a very edifying experience. Um, you know, pretty much education and networking opportunities from seven AM to well into the night. Um, I did go to a number of seminars that, uh, did have some relevance for our community. Um, most importantly, um, community slash neighborhood law programs. I got to hear two attorneys that piloted a program seven years ago into attorney in vacant, into distressed buildings, mostly residential, but some commercial in the city of Vallejo. Um, cleaning up that city kind of in similar ways, uh, that we're trying to do here. Um, and I actually had the opportunity to talk to them for several hours, um, after the seminar later, um, and had really good info from them. Uh, one of them now works for a receivership that would be interested in coming up this far north, um, if there was a city, um, looking to work with, uh, that sort of thing. So I've got those contacts and look forward to handing them over to staff, um, as we switch over. Um, I got to go to a housing, a panel with housing experts on affordable housing. And, um, while it looks as if the chances of a community like us being able to get new construction is very, very difficult, um, given that they're, they're highly competitive, you know, everywhere in the state. Um, there are a number of programs for rehabilitating older buildings that developers could take advantage of, maybe the city could take, uh, a role in that. I also got to go to a, uh, modern police, um, seminar on modern policing utilizing technology. I, I realize our sheriff's department has already implemented a great many of these, but I look forward, um, to kind of taking that insight in when we renegotiate our contract coming up here. Um, on that note, um, congratulations, uh, Lieutenant Chrissy. Um, really excited to have you on board and excited about, uh, the change in organization for the sheriff's department. Um, and we look forward to working closely with you in finding a new permanent Dunsmere Police Chief. Let's see, what else? Um. I did have the opportunity to meet, um, Matt Tate from Retail Strategies, the gentleman who gave the, um, presentation to us some weeks ago. Um, and he actually, um, introduced me to the city of Clear Lake, um, that is to say, uh, mayor and several council members from there. And they kind of went over what it looked like, what it is looking like, how it's unfolding in their town. And it was actually probably a stronger case for considering something like Retail Strategies than the presentation, but I'm happy to share any of that information, um, going forward. I, I do think, um, you know, how beneficial I found this conference to be, it would be nice to put together a larger delegation, uh, next year. And I think it'd be good to include, um, finance director and new city manager. I think that might be a, a good time for us to go out there together and, um, look at all the possibilities. So anyway, I thank you guys for the opportunity to represent Dunsmere. Um, the other exciting news I have is, um, you know, it's been brought to my attention by many of residents and businesses in particular, the inconvenience of no longer having a branch bank here in Dunsmere. Um, while I, I don't have any concrete commitment, I have been talking with a bank, uh, that has expressed, uh, deep interest in putting a kind of bigger ATM in our town. Um, they're going to be taking this proposal in the basic concept to their board in late October and we'll find out whether they're, yes, deeply interested. Um, well, we'd like to do it, but we're not quite sure when, or no, this isn't interested in us. But, um, if, if these people don't work out, uh, I'll try to find another one because I, I think it's, um, it's going to be beneficial to someone to put it here and I think we need that option in town. So just, um, moderate good news that, that this bank at least is in preliminary discussions, interested.
Good work. Good work, dude. That's good.
All right, well, that, that's all I have, uh, for this evening, um, uh, except for one more. I really like our hybrid model. This is amazing that I get to be away but still participate.
Yeah.
It's going to help us all, you know, for years to come, so I'm, I'm a big fan.
Of course, we have to worry about the brown and kicking back in again down law, don't we?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Sometime.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Okay, moving on. Are there any committee reports?
We did not have a finance committee meeting because we did not have a forum.
Okay. Uh, any other committee reports? Okay, moving on. Before we go any further with the, uh, this agenda, I want to make a couple of points on this agenda.
No, we do not want to get to that one.
Oh, no? All right. Fine, okay. Do I, I'm entertaining a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, on the second one, I think I know what you want to do. Now I'd like to talk about the items B and C on the consent agenda.
Okay, well, that's not what I was going to talk about. I was hoping that we could just roll the consent agenda.
Well, he's requesting to take them off.
Well, not necessarily. We're not going to take them off. I'm just concerned, um.
Kick, kick, kick.
Yeah.
May I?
Yes.
In response to your statement. I was hoping that we could just adopt the consent agenda and move on with this meeting. Here's, here's why. This is all. consent agenda and move on with this meeting. Here's, here's why. This is all stuff we done. We've done a bunch of projects.
That's not my point.
If you have a question, you can ask clarifying questions.
Yeah, the only clarified question I have was, I noticed on both of them that the motion did not include a precipitating statement about CEQA.
Oh, for the approval.
Yeah, that's the only thing. That's not any kind of, I'm just saying that it says specifically, we have to say that we declare this is not CEQA. And in both of the motions, those were not in there.
Uh, we did have Rico. Rico, it's just a general exemption. I don't believe, we don't technically need to adopt a general exemption.
So just to be clear, the exemptions are built into the resolutions for both projects? I'm sorry, the exemptions are built in?
Okay.
So that's, I saw it in there, but it's not in the motion. And I remember in past motions, it included that phrase as we spelled it out. That's what I'm saying. So in the future, can we make sure we include that in the motion?
Absolutely. I apologize for the, for it not being there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we have everything lined up. I saw it in the resolution. But with that in mind, I wonder if we adopt the consent agenda?
Mayor, second. Call. Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? You know, okay. Now, now that we've adopted the consent agenda, and we've approved the minutes, before we go any further with this agenda, there's something that we gotta adjust. Starting with page fifty-eight.
So really quick, it's just when you get to that item. It's not like editing each item. So.
We can amend the agenda before we go there?
No. It's when you get to the item.
A lot of us amend the agenda before we go.
Uh, we, we redid that when we did the protocols. We don't approve the agenda or amend the agenda anymore. That's, I don't have a pre-agenda committee which is.
And I never got a phone call. So that's kind of, maybe that's why this is like this is, because I never got a phone call. Pointy interest. Okay. Do you have the public hearing? You have a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution twenty-four. Blake, you wanna take this one?
I'm here if you'd like me to take this.
All right, Rico, go ahead.
All right. So as this is a resolution, but it's actually the adoption of user fees, which is what's included in the resolution, to recover the city's cost inspect and register short-term rentals. So the registration inspection, the required inspections include initial and triennial inspections for compliance with the city's short-term rental regulations, building code, and fire code. And the yearly inspections are for fire safety. Initial and triennial inspections will be completed by the city clerk and fire chief, and the fire safety inspections will be conducted by the fire chief alone. Registration entails the annual processing of short-term rental transient occupancy registration certificate applications by administrative staff and contract staff, as well as code enforcement review of advertising platforms for compliance with city approvals and regulations. Based upon a review of anticipated workload, staff salaries, and contracts service rates for the current fiscal year, estimated costs to the city to provide these services are $228 for a, to process a short-term rental occupancy registration certificate application, $148 for initial and triennial inspections, and $96 for annual fire safety inspections. In order to maximize cost recovery while ensuring that user fees do not exceed the reasonable cost of services, is recommended that city council adopt user fees that are set just slightly below estimated costs. This would include $225 for a registration certificate, $145 for initial and triennial inspections, and $95 for annual inspections. It's estimated that these fees would allow the city to recover between 97.97% and then 99.48% of its anticipated labor costs and minimize impacts of the general fund. And just to be clear, these are just labor costs. They don't include administrative overhead. They don't include giving, you know, keeping the lights on, anything else, printing papers, any of this. But it's just labor cost. So it's below full cost recovery slightly. To adopt the recommended fees, the draft resolution has been prepared for the city council's consideration. And this resolution is included as attachment A to your staff report regarding the California Environmental Quality Act. It's staff's opinion that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guidelines, sections fifteen, zero, six, one, B, three, fifteen, two, seven, A, I'm sorry, fifteen, two, seven, three, A, one, and fifteen, three, seven, eight, B, four. This is because the project does not have the potential to cause a significant effect on the environment, because CEQA does not apply to the establishment of fees by public agencies to meet operating expenses, and because the project entails the creation of a government funding mechanism that does not involve commitment to a specific project with a potential to impact the environment. If the city council concurs with staff's recommendation, the council will need to make the determination that the project is exempt from CEQA prior to project approval. Accordingly, findings in support of the recommended CEQA determination are included in the draft resolution prepared for the city council's consideration. Ultimately, staff has recommended city council adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, establishing fees for short-term rental inspections and registrations. Further, a motion to this effect is provided for the city council's consideration on page three of the staff report, which is page forty-five of the agenda packet. Please note, however, that once adopted, fees go into effect sixty days later. In this case, that would be December sixth. As council likely recalls, the city's new short-term rental regulations include delayed implementation of the inspection and registration requirements until January first of two thousand twenty-two. This is to allow short-term rental owners sufficient time to come into compliance with the new regulations. That is only six, sorry, twenty-six days after the earliest date that the short-term rental fees could become effective. For this reason, the city council may also want to consider extending this forthcoming deadline until April first of two thousand twenty-two. If the council finds the idea to be agreeable, to recommend that the draft resolution be amended to include the following language. So this would go in between, be it further resolved, that line and the it is hereby certified line of the resolution. It would state, be it further resolved, that to allow additional time following adoption of the user fees included in exhibit A one, the city will postpone enforcement of the short-term rental, excuse me, inspection and short-term rental transient occupancy registration certificate requirements until April first two thousand twenty-two. So you would not be amending the ordinance. You're basically just proclaiming when adopting these fees that you are basically not gonna be taking any action as far as enforcement until April first two thousand twenty-two. And that was run past the city attorney to make sure it was okay to do tonight. Alternatively, the council can simply decide to extend the deadline by minuto. You don't need to amend the resolution. But that, if you do wish to amend the resolution, that's probably the cleanest. And that, I would just simply amend your motion to include the additional language as recommended by staff. So again, there is a recommended motion on page three of that staff report, which is page forty-five of the agenda packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Or you open up the public comment?
Rico, I just have one question, and that is, so this is a new cost-based fee imposed by the city, and if for whatever reason, short-term rental outfits that don't wanna get a permit and tell the city we're not going to comply, are there late fees? Do they lose their permit? Is that all in a different ordinance, or let unsaid with this one?
So what would happen if they say that we're not going to pay the fee? They are not registered, therefore they're in violation of the short-term rental regulations and subject to penalties.
And those are stated elsewhere?
Those are stated in the short-term rental regulations, which I believe is chapter seventeen forty-two, I believe. Or chapter seventeen forty, I apologize.
Thank you. Anybody else? Matthew, got anything?
I have comments, but not direct.
All right. This time I'll open up the podium and public comment. Please. You have three minutes. Three minutes, sir.
Well, in, as our first step in our new partnership, I have a couple of questions to do. The, you mentioned three separate components of these, $225 to pay for the city's cost of managing the collection and record keeping and all that for the application. Well, that's more than double the current cost. I'm not sure how that's justified to leave that alone with the inspection for the city. I'm not sure who the city staff or what, but there's a triennial inspection. That component comes to $145 per year. So is the actual cost for that? I might, I might get an answer there. It seems like if that cost is for something that only happens every three years, couldn't we take that cost and kind of like third, that would drop this, this total of these fees to $325? Because if it's $145 per year, I mean, you're, you're $40 or $50 or so for those inspections, and that seems to be it. So other than that, that annual versus triennial component, and quite a jump in the, in the application and, those, those seem, that's my comment.
Okay, so, is there anybody else? Wendy, do I have any answers?
Not that I'm seeing, no.
No?
No.
If anybody has any comments, raise your hand. How do they raise their hand, Wendy?
Blake.
You go to the reactions tab on the bottom of the screen, if you're within there, or if you have like star or something there.
Star six.
Very good, star six.
It's number five.
No, it's star nine.
Star nine. Yes, star nine, and then star six or seven. And then you can also go to the participants tab. There's a raise your hand option there.
I think it's there. Or at least I can't do it.
I don't, I don't see no hands raised.
It's under the participant, or the reactions, the little smiley face, reactions plus button, click that, and then there's a raise your hand.
Ms. Wendy?
I still don't see any hands.
Okay, this time I'm gonna close the podium and open it back up to council.
Could Rico just kind of run through how the fees are applied? Because I believe the public comment was related to the triennial. My understanding is that when the action happens, that's another $145 to accept every year. It's every time you would have that triennial inspection, correct?
Yeah, if I'm understanding you correctly, the annual fees are actually $95. So the triennial inspections, or the initial and triennial inspections, are again, prior to the initial registration, and then once again, every three years. And they're really just based, like all fees are, on the number of staff hours that are required to complete the inspection. And just for perspective, I think, you know, you'll probably recall that we touched on it briefly back in, oh, I think it was August, we talked about fees, sort of where this was headed, to kind of get an idea, because there was concern from the city council that fees would not be set so high that it was prohibitive for short-term rental operators. And at the time, I queried Shasta County, I spoke with the plan director there, and because they, they also followed a different process that the city council was considering as well at the time. So what I talked to them about was, you know, their annual fees are $460. And for Shasta County, Shasta County, I'm sorry, that's their, that's their initial, is $460. And then that is, I believe, also required periodically. The, that fee was described to me as being inadequate for them. However, when we did our cost analysis of the number of hours that were expected, we came up, and it may just likely was frankly travel time, given that we're a smaller jurisdiction than a large county, there, you know, we're $90 less expensive than they are for that initial registration. And they charged $195 for their initial inspection, I'm sorry, for their inspections, for the annual inspections, whereas we're charging $95, so less than half the, half the cost that they're recovering. So I think that there's, you know, frankly, these fees are, again, I, I looked at them and I thought, I was a little concerned, because there's so much less, what I was hearing was inadequate for Shasta County. But to be honest, when we looked at staff hours to process the short-term rental registration certificates and the, to conduct the triennial and the annual inspections, we just couldn't see how that, you know, cost is being incurred by Shasta County. I know they've got additional costs by using Granicus for their code enforcement, but we've even got that built in. So I'm, I do suggest that we just, you know, these are, seem to be accurate fees that cover, recover the vast majority of the city's costs, but that the city also just keep an eye on this and make sure that the city is adequately recovering costs and not charging more than frankly it needs for these services.
And because it's a resolution, am I correct in understanding that we could revisit this in a year if we see that we're spending more or less time on these things?
You, these are fees that you could revisit at any time. But yes, I would, I would think that probably in a year, we would look at this and just sort of look whether or not we are recovering costs or, you know, I don't, I honestly do not believe that the city will be, I think these fees do not exceed the reasonable cost of services, but we'll certainly look at that.
Okay, thank you. So yes, I just did the math. So to do the initial year registration is maybe $370?
That's correct. Right.
Two years after that are gonna be $320 because of the $95 inspection instead of the $145. And then come your third year, it will be $370. Because that'll be the triennial.
All right?
Yeah.
All right. Matthew, you have comments?
Well, is that correct? Is the, is the registration certificate yearly?
The registration certificate is required on annual basis. It would be $225 annually to register. And then additionally, every year, there would be, with the exception of the initial and triennial inspections, there would be an inspection fee, which would be $95. So the, the total cost, so the initial fee, Madalucce is correct, would be $370. And thereafter, the fee, the combined total fee would be $240.
$240?
No, I'm sorry. I'm doing math poorly, looking at the wrong numbers. It would be, it would be 310. Yes, I'm looking at the wrong numbers. I apologize.
Basic math. Yeah.
She nailed it.
That, that your question, Matthew?
Yes, it does. Only other thoughts on it would be, I, I, for one, would favor not under, well, I mean, if, if we have our accurate estimate of the cost of service, I don't like that it's slightly under, because these are based off of labor hours, and those tend to go up. In fact, some of them are contracted to go up. Some of the labor involved, some is not contracted to go up. But I don't know if there's any way to build in a cost of living increase sort of thing to this.
Well, one of the things. Give them a significant raise that hour changes, so we can review that on an annual basis. That's something how we could adjust it now.
Yeah. And just so the council's aware, I'm actually have prepared a fee study for all planning fees for the city that will be brought to the city council shortly. These fees are consistent with what's in that fee study. I wanted to bring this to you as a standalone issue because of the interest in the community regarding short-term rentals. But, but now that we do have a robust fee study that the city will have, thanks to the SB two planning grant, we will be utilizing that to reevaluate our fees on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Is that it? Here? Well, at the very end of your presentation, Rico, you sort of gave us a fastball or a curve ball. I don't know. The suggestion that this, we got.
The suggestion that this, the gun would go off on January first of twenty twenty-two, the gun would go off on April first of twenty twenty-two. Do you have a recommendation on the start date? And does our ad hoc committee have a recommendation on the start date?
So this was not a recommendation of the ad hoc committee. This is a recommendation of staff based on existing requirements. One, you know, we still got changes to, I believe, chapter three point two four regarding T O T to bring the city council, not that, that frankly just goes into effect thirty days later. It's, you know, two readings, that's not a big deal. But frankly, we just looked at this and we're going, we're kind of putting short-term rental operators up against the wall. We just want to allow people a little bit more time to kind of step back, feel like they're not being pushed into this quickly, that they can digest the regulations, they've got time, get through the holidays, and that they can work on getting their registrations and their inspections done, the registrations done prior to the busy season next year.
I have a question. So is this something that we could just do on the general business license renewal or like business license information so that they basically get like here's what you're charged for the short-term rental on their like business license mailer? Because you send renewal notices every year. Could we maybe coordinate this that it is at the same time as when they went through their general business license?
I don't see a problem with that. Our general business licenses are July one to June thirty. It's a separate issue though, there's a business and then there's a short-term rental.
Yeah.
That does ring a point, it would be nice to marry the two of them.
Well, yeah, that way if you just, you know that they're a business that operates as a lodging or short-term rental, you just click that for, you know, next to that box on your business license and it has to be associated with it. I don't know. It's just, it's just a suggestion to say.
I love box clicking, yes.
Maybe make it more efficient since everybody's anticipating the general business license anyway. Maybe coordinating that to be too on the same time or, I don't know if that's just too much of a point.
Would move in that we start July first.
Yeah, I just for fiscal purposes.
We can, we can certainly do that. We, we did look at this when we were writing, drafting the ordinance. And to be honest, I don't know, I don't recall why we ended up the way it ended up, but I just know that we couldn't go with the fiscal year. And I don't know if it was just because of sort of trying to meet this initial timeline, trying to get these regulations in place sooner, but I, it was my recollection that there was something that got in the way from us being able to do that. But as far as sort of delaying implementation, as Councilman Doish said, until this first fiscal year, I, you know, I think that absolutely the city council could do that. And, and that would also help us time to figure out whether or not we could amend the regulations to pair it with the business license dates as well.
Yeah, I would be happy with July one, certainly.
So are we?
We're discussing.
Are you receiving a minute motion? Matthew?
Just seems like this is a larger discussion than what we're dealing with on the agenda tonight, which will be the.
Well, I, I think they kind of are married. I think people aren't going to want to know when they're going to have to start complying with the, the rates that we set.
Based on the ordinance, it's January first.
Base, yeah, well, the, the fees become effective sixty days after adoption, which again was just sort of allowing the city twenty-six days to have fees in place before people were subject to enforcement action for not being registered. So we, we simply want to give people a little bit more breathing room. We, you know, we don't want to say, you know, you've got twenty-six days to comply, hurry up.
You know, I don't know, twenty-six days doesn't seem unreasonable for businesses.
Here, well, I'm sort of in line with the vice mayor's thoughts. The conversation is useful, maybe if the compromise is January the first, but enforcement doesn't start until the end of the year. I don't like the idea of this new community having their backs against the wall or feeling like they have their backs against the wall. That doesn't serve anybody's interest. But again, based on the town hall experience, to me, for a small town of two thousand, I'm amazed at how vibrant the short-term rental community is going to be in Southern Siskiyou. So again, we're trying to balance, I don't want to forego six months of revenue for licensure and inspection and all of that, but I do think we need to have a work-through time before we start enforcing. And we will all gather information as far as rate levels and comparisons that this needs to, and we did push very hard, great work by the ad hoc committee and the staff, is just now that we've done all of our homework, how do we work with the community?
So would you be amiable to applying the fees come April first or July first, January first?
Anything.
Okay, I'll just, I'll go back to the original motion. I'll, I'll make a minute motion to move forward with the collection of the fees beginning April first, twenty twenty-two.
You've got the motion out there, but I still have a question. Can I? Go ahead, ask a question. Well, again, when we look at the ordinance or the resolution, I should say, does, does it give us a date when it's due? Is it always going to be January first? And again, I keep coming back to the logic in my mind that we should have the same thing as the business license.
So basically what Rico was saying is, you know, we can go in and change the ordinance to make it July one instead of January one. We're just looking at January one for this next calendar year right now. So for twenty twenty-three, we could change it with the ordinance. But for twenty twenty-two, if, if we were to move forward this way, my understanding is that the fees would apply on January one. And so my.
The enforcement until April.
Well, I don't know what the enforcement was, I can't remember off the top of my head at the moment, but my, my motion is to at least put off the collection of the fees for at least this one year until April first.
So that's, the motion's been made to put off, to enforce the fees, but put off the enforcement until April first?
No, just the fee collection until April first.
Until April first. That gives everybody's little breathing room. I, I, I kind of like that. So the motion's been made, so is there a second? So there's a second? Let's call the vote. All those in favor? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Do I need a roll call vote on this?
This isn't the resolution at hand, it's just the motion.
All right. I need a roll call vote, I mean, I need a.
And you can always request a.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, question passed.
And then the issue is if the resolution need amendment or is it good?
I agree, so we could just do a minute.
Yeah, so the, so the resolution would not need an amendment at this point.
Okay, okay, do we need to start this motion off with, I, I moved that we make the findings of this project as exempt from C-Quads?
Yes.
And that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty-four, the status of speed, the show of the rest of the script and, and regulations?
Registrations.
Registrations. So now that's been put on there, can somebody say, I second that?
I second that.
Okay, so that part's been, part's been fulfilled as far as the motion. Is that acceptable?
Well, do, do you want to further discuss the rate? Basically, if we move forward with the motion and do a vote now, just to be clear to everybody who are on the little bit, so it's basically approving with two twenty-five, the one forty-five, the ninety-five?
Yes. Okay.
Nobody had a conversation about the level yet, so I just want to make sure that we do whatever.
Yeah, don't come up to the three seven.
What do you have?
Yes, three seven.
So.
Don't eight? Two forty-five, one forty-five, ninety-five?
Two twenty-five.
That's three sixty-five. And that, and that ninety-five? Bop bop, basic math.
No, no, it's, it can't be applied at the end.
Three seven.
It's three seventy.
So, okay, it's three seventy, what's, what changes in that?
So three seventy is two twenty-five plus one forty-five.
Okay, so we're not doing this?
We are, so that would be the second. So this is for the initial inspection and the triennial inspection. This would be the inspection on the two years in between those two.
So add that up.
So, so it's three seventy for the, so that was what I did earlier, we talked about three seventy for the first year, three twenty, then three twenty, and then back to three seventy at the triennial.
Nowhere, do that number come up? Right now, two twenty-five, one forty-five.
Yeah, because it's three separate charges.
Add ninety-five dollars to that, that's four fifty-five.
They're all, they're not all going to hit at once, though.
There's only one inspection each year.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what you're misunderstanding.
All right. This don't add up to no three seventy, is what I'm saying.
You have the annual and then you have one or the other of the inspections.
I got it. Cool, are we all good?
Okay.
Are we ready to move on with this one then? Put this one to bed?
Okay.
Yeah? Oh, wait, you had that motion right seconded, you never voted on that, didn't we?
No, you never vote.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion where we made us exempt from C-Quads, say aye?
Aye.
Well, it's the, it's the adoption of the resolution and I think that it's exempt from C-Quads.
Right, both of them together, right, aye, everybody agree?
Aye.
Cool, let's move on.
Did we get Matthew?
Yeah?
Maybe he's going.
I'm very nervous.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we were clear.
Well, let's, let's just state where we are with this before we close the shop. So we have, do we bring this back for a second public hearing?
It's a resolution, not a ordinance.
Okay, not a ordinance, okay, good. We bring it back, we can change it.
Well, you know, it's sort of saying it's not an ordinance, that's where I was confused.
Moving on, item ten, old business in the interim city manager contract. Blake?
You got it. So for you there, we have the agreement for the actual interim city manager, across page fifty of your data packet. So we're asking to either approve or reject the contract with Jefferson Spencer. So at the September seventeenth council meeting, you guys allowed city manager to negotiate the agreement. So current city manager Todd has been in discussions with Jefferson. Some of the details of the contract would be that the effective start date will not be October one hundred and eleven.
That's fakey.
But will be October twelve.
Cool.
So making note of that, that's on page forty-nine of the agenda. So the start date could be, it's okay, October twelve, and that's already been discussed between city and potential. So the term will expire at an appointment of a new city manager, so city council will do that, or the termination, which the termination clauses are, Mr. Spencer could terminate with a fourteen-day notice, or the city will terminate with seven days' notice. A compensation, forty-two hundred dollars for a two-week period, and that is for thirty-two hours a week, much the same as previous interim city manager contracts. And that's all the details that we've got now, so take questions or.
And just to be clear, Mayor Bryan and myself did review the contract and gave notes to Todd as well prior to coming to this meeting, so we did.
And it did go over with John K.
Yep.
Okay. We've had some experience with these interim contracts, haven't we? Nine times? At this time, I'll open up the podium to public comment.
Well, I think Peter.
Well, we're, we're recording, we're recording first. Is there any hands raised, Ms. Winnie?
No hands are raised.
This is on the item on the interim city manager contract. Any hands raised? Okay, at this time I'm closing the podium to public comment, and I'll open it up to council. Peter, you have questions?
I have, well, in our last meeting, I think the two of us hope to see some sort of an application or letter of interest from Mr. Spencer, and I haven't seen that yet. So I don't know if what we're doing tonight is approving a hearing sheet, that we're not hiring Mr. Spencer tonight, or are we hiring Mr. Spencer tonight and approving his contract?
This is approved of the contract.
We're hiring him and approving him to start on the twelfth.
So my, my only complaint is I was promised some sort of interaction with the Kennedy, and I've got nothing.
I, I, I have kind of concur with you, I thought that he would be here, but I guess he was here before and met us when we interviewed him, but we kicked Todd over here.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, so I, I concur with your assessment, I thought he'd be here, but he's been speaking with everybody else, not us.
I, I have not spoken to him.
I thought you spoke with him?
No. The mayor and us.
I, I have had interactions with him, most of them, except for one, were prior to our last meeting. During that time, I was certainly personally convinced of his eagerness and commitment to helping Dunsmere. I, I was, like everyone else, promised some letter of interest that Todd was going to facilitate. Todd not being here at this meeting is a disappointment to me, and I think the explanation for why we don't have this set up more fully, I think, lies with him. That being said, this is to hire Jefferson Spencer as interim city manager. He is, I think it should be known, deeply interested in applying for the permanent position. He's very happy to be hired for this one, but he didn't, and he was very forthright in saying that this is his dream job for his current life, and that he does have experience in both government and private sector. He has run his own business for a time.
Okay, I have, if you're interested, I have a copy of his application right here. I can actually read the letter that he wrote us.
I, I think, if I may, that, you know, th- this is based on our memory of having appreciated his application two years ago, and I do appreciate that it doesn't make anyone feel comfortable making a decision based off things we reviewed two years ago. My own interactions with him do not involve an official application, but we did discuss the city situation at some length, and he, he said both, he is interested in being here as long as we'll have him, and that he just also appreciates the opportunity to be interim and wants to work hard for us, you know, dur- during that time. You know, my own thoughts on it are, this is a perfect match, except for it is not the most intuitive thing to hire someone with less experience as city manager to be an interim. So this is going to be kind of a combination of tryout, but I did make it abundantly clear to him that we are going to have a full-fledged search, and we hope to hire the best candidate, and that very much may or may not be him. And he understands that and still wants to, to pursue this with us.
I will remind council that whoever we hire is an at-will employee. So that's being said. Here, do you have?
Well, just, we're having an open conversation here. So for the balance of October, I don't know if October is our next meeting or not. Is that why you picked the eleventh or?
No, it's just because it's next week. Because we were not able to approve, we cannot even consider approving an agreement unless it's a regular meeting.
Next meeting is twenty-first.
For our next regular meeting, will we, will we be talking to Todd? Will we be talking to Jefferson?
If we approve him, will we talk to Jefferson?
And, and Todd, we have Todd until November, because we're pushing for a shorter timeline to get an interim in to have overlap with Todd.
Well, whoever is talking to our almost interim city manager, Mr. Spencer, if you would let him know that I would appreciate a letter of interest in the next ten days, I would actually like to meet him before our next regular meeting, I appreciate that.
Still a comment?
So we are.
You got a big head. Okay, Matthew, you got anything else?
No, except to say that this is not the way we are going to be conducting our search for our permanent city manager. We will not be in the situation where we're, we're flying blind to some extent, wishing for a more substantive application process. The reason for bringing on Mr. Spencer in this manner is so that we can have a sustained, you know, accurate search for the best candidate.
Okay. Bruce? The point I'd like to make for anybody who's joining this conversation without prior experience is that two years ago, when we hired our current city manager, the committee that I was on along with Mr. Casey, we ended up hiring, getting down to two people. We interviewed him here in this room, and I personally felt that either one of them would be fine, and I got that same sense from everybody else. We deemed one.
We deemed one way, but coming into an interim search, uh, a search for an interim, I can't feel any better about it than that, knowing that back there, when you were there, looked at everything, you were comfortable with it. So, I just want folks to know that as we reach out to this fellow, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, what we can work out together, and I think we'll be in fine hands, especially since Todd is, is spending as much time as he can working to get him ready for us.
Thank you, Bruce. It was good, it's, uh, better be, for a little reflection, it's on, I can remember a little bit. I think, I think military was the only reason why we went one way or not the other, we moved to find out the state, okay? Um, I'm looking to entertain a motion.
I will move, okay? We have a, do we need to scum that?
We're, we're either, uh, at the top, we're either approving or reject interim management agreement with Jefferson Spencer.
And will we approve the interim contract, or Mr. Spencer?
With the start date of October twelve?
Yeah, that, yes.
Okay.
There's been a first, there's been a second, Ms. Whitney, you have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaisler?
Aye.
Mayor Bryan?
Aye.
Thank you, council, it's always nice when we have a unanimous decision, so it passes. Welcome to the party, Mr. Jefferson, I mean, Mr. Spencer, and I will have to, uh, echo my fellow councilmen and friend Peter Art's comments, I'd like to meet you again too. Uh, I don't need no letter, but I'd sure like to meet you before this party starts.
Yeah, we still gotta arrange some sort of a get-together, I mean, I.
That'd be sort of, that'd be kind of nice, if we could arrange a get-together before the next meeting, so that we do have a chance to say hello, and welcome them before we.
Well, for starters, I'm, uh, well, hoping he'll be able to attend the local meeting with us as well, I still have an opportunity to meet him there.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, lost my, uh, picture, where, where is it? It is the front of purchase of the underlying land at the children's park, as we're having discussion on this right now. And one's being asked to decide whether to allow the city manager to purchase the underlying property at the children's park for their appraised value of eighty thousand dollars. Lake?
I'll actually take this one, so this is, um, if we remember, this is part of our Prop sixty parks grant, uh, which is the purchase of the underlying children's park property and the replacement of the equipment. We finally got approval from the state, which took a lot longer than we had hoped for. Uh, but this is a formal, uh, step in actually moving forward with purchasing the property is to allow Todd to sign on our behalf, um, the purchase agreements. So, the appraised value of the property is eighty thousand dollars, which that full amount is going to be reimbursed to the city through the grant. Uh, but it is a reimbursement-based grant, so we do have to approve the expenditure before, you know, moving forward with that process. So, it's just, it's a formality for that grant.
On that note, here is another, um, change that will be made to this, will be amended, because here it says no fiscal impact done. I'm assuming that somebody thought, because you're getting paid back, but we're spending money first, and there, there will be a roll call on this, because there is a fiscal impact. Um, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. This is about buying the children's park once and for all, stop paying rent. Ms. Whitney, do I have any hands raised?
You do not, but right here on the audience.
Sir, please come to the podium. State your name and your address.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
My name is Alice Brendel, I'm on the one Elmore, and I just have a question, who owns the land now?
Benson Roofing, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other further questions, any other hands, Ms. Whitney?
No other hands are raised on Zoom.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the podium, the public comment, open back up the council.
Uh, I'd like to point out that there should be, um, special, uh, thanks given to, uh, Councilwoman Lukeyzi for all the work she put into making this happen.
Lot of work.
I wish we would have had it done by this summer, but I was not anticipating parks being overloaded.
Well, the big thing that for folks that don't know is, is that we've been paying like seven or eight hundred dollars a month for land, uh, that now we'll be able to own, and, uh, we'll be able to, uh, not only do that, but increase the value of the property by getting the ADA, buying new equipment, everything, so this is a win-win-win, so once again, thank you to them.
Yeah, the way I look at it, this way, by my, the kids can keep the park.
Yeah.
And to me, that's all it was about, you know what I'm saying? Matthew, you got any comments?
Um, no, except to say that, um, this has been a, uh, a long-term goal of both myself and I think of all, uh, you know, the sitting council. Um, you know, this will pay for itself even without the grant, um, in a remarkably short number of years, plus give continuity and permanence to a beautiful park, so, thank you, thank you, Juliana.
Jill, and move the item, and whether there should be naming rights for our children's park, let me talk about that.
Will you add, is moving, will I hear a second? I'll second. Okay, Ms. Whitney, could I please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaisler?
Aye.
And Mayor Bryan?
Aye.
That's what we should call the park, I Park. A passing down of a stake, you. Okay, moving on, to the last item of the evening. This is new business, line eleven, COVID relief. This is a new roof for the library, mini splits for council chambers, staff, and substation, and the COVID expansion Denver Community Resource Center. Library, now, if we go to our paperwork, I'd like to point out, there's a discrepancy on page fifty-eight when it talks about the suggested motions. There are three items on there, those three items are not right. What is missing is the section about the.
I have one, this one.
Vice Mayor Kaisler, those are actually the attachments listed, not, it's not the suggested motion, it's just what's attached.
Who got it?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think.
Where's the, where's, no, I'm right, I got this one, type on one, type on right. Where's the attachment on the, uh, flat, on the, uh, uh, where's the attachment on the air conditioning?
It isn't.
Oh, I still gotta go with this, so I gotta go with this, I gotta go with this, I gotta go with this, there shouldn't have been the attachment. Yes, I know, thank you very much.
I think they were just putting the, the back of the quote.
There's three items that we're going to be discussing here.
Sure, the, the mini split quotes are not included, that is true.
So, we're not approving that?
We are still.
Approving it, okay.
To just didn't get each of the individual.
No, I got yellowed there, that's, so I'm, I'm posing I'm gonna approve that?
It's the suggested.
Okay, then over here.
Yeah, but you're right, if we get the quotes are not in the package right now.
Okay, so, am I voting on three things?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, this is, never mind, we're voting on three things. The first item that we're gonna talk about is mini splits for, for here, for the substation, for the sheriffs, and for the fire department. My opinion, we need to do all we can do to make it comfortable for our sheriffs, like for our fire chief in his little office. It's about time that we did something, so I'm all in favor of this, just so everybody knows. Um, the second item that we're gonna be discussing is gonna be the roof on the library. And the third item that we're gonna be discussing is relief to the resource center for the revenue that they've lost this year. At that, with that being said, I will open up the podium to public comment.
Do you want to, or this one, could you?
Yeah, I, there is a third quote we just got from Mast Roofing, we just got it today, so I'd like to include it, happy to include it, um, but since it didn't get in the packet, it's up to.
Did it make a deadline?
We, we called twelve roofing companies, and only two of them got back to us, so I was very excited to get a third, but it's, we didn't have a deadline.
What was the total cost?
Thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars.
I spoke with one of these people before I brought that one to get there. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna open up the podium to public comment real quick. Do I have any hands raised, Ms. Whitney?
At the moment, no, not on Zoom.
This is, oh, this is a sheriff.
Yes, sir.
I, I recommend that, for the record, that we simply state both the three projects now, how much money we're leaving, and we're asking for, so people understand that we're the public comment.
Do you want me to go over all the quotes before?
No, I think it's just the number one, two.
When I say that, we're gonna talk about the air conditioner?
Uh.
We're gonna talk about the roof on the library?
I guess the, I think Councilor Deutsch just wanted to mention.
What do you want to do?
Let the folks know what the money is, how much money we're talking about with these reviews, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Uh, I'm not a very certain, but. Well, go ahead, Bruce.
Well, okay, so, what I have here is that providing reimbursement for COVID, um, we have the heating and cooling, well, you've got the numbers there, I've got them here, we've got, um, the one you have highlighted is thirty-nine thousand seven ninety-four from Alt Trade. Uh, the one we have for the city library roof is, um, fifteen thousand nine forty-two for perfectionists.
Fifteen three forty-two.
Three forty-two. Almost got it back to full, and then how much worth, worth for the mini splits?
Twenty-one, oh.
Twenty-one thousand, oh, the mini splits we already had.
Yeah, you already said that, thirty-nine.
Oh, how much for the, uh.
The resource center.
Twenty-one thousand three hundred.
Okay. Those are the three numbers.
Those are the three numbers that we're discussing here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, this is all possible through the, the COVID funding, which were allocated a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
So, one eighty-seven this year, one eighty-seven next year?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're spinning part of the one eighty-seven. The numbers that we, that Mr. Deutsch spoke out were the numbers that came in under. These are the numbers that we're going to vote to accept on tonight. I reiterate the numbers, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-four for the mini splits, fifteen thousand three forty-two for our roof, and twenty-one thousand three hundred for the lost revenue for our resource center. Peter, I can fill your bill, sir.
Well, uh, I, on a procedural basis, I do have financial interests in the Denver Community Resource Center, so I want to recuse myself, because I own the land under the community garden, I own one of the buildings that the Community Resource Center leases. Um, and I can excuse myself of the whole, I, I did have one question regarding roofing on the city library, but procedurally, I don't know how you're gonna do this, so I can leave for the whole thing, or ask my question?
Why, ask your question.
Well, i- i- as somebody that's put a lot of roofs on a lot of old buildings in Dunsmere, it seemed pretty obvious to me, uh, Benson and Son is almost at forty-three thousand, Perfectionist is at fifteen thousand, and the difference is that Benson would tear off the old roof, and I can't imagine Perfectionist, if you look at their bid, they're gonna scoop the old roof, and then they're gonna put another roof on top of it. So, for the relative difference of thirty thousand, if I read the Perfectionist bid correctly, it was a twenty-year warranty. I don't know where they're from, whether they'll be like Benson, if we got a leak problem, they'll fix it. But I, I do, I've always liked the work and work that Benson has done, I think it's good value for them.
I'm going to answer you personally, before you leave, sir, just so you can leave with a good heart, okay? I spoke with the guy that owns this perfection roofing, um, they just recently did our elementary school.
Okay.
They did weed elementary school. Um, the membrane, the membrane that, uh, Benson's using is kind of like old school. This is the new stuff, he's not looking to make a mon- a million dollars, he's looking to make, uh, a good investment in the town of Dunsmere. Um, Jack spoke with him this evening, he's willing to walk jobs and take looks at it with us, uh, but he, I, he's redoing the parapet walls and tying in the drains, everything that Benson said, the only thing is he just scribbled it out on a paper. I'm a hundred percent confident on that. Okay, thank you, sir.
We do have a public comment.
Okay, see if I have a public comment, I'm gonna reopen up the podium to the public comment.
Tim Holt on, on Zoom has a public comment.
If you're in the room, you can just.
Unmute, all right, um, this is actually Sandra Hood, uh, six-two-three-five Hill Street. I am a, a library board member, and I'm, we are definitely need a new roof, we support the idea of a new roof on the library, every time it rains, or with the snow, um, snow melt, uh, the library leaks, and the poor public works guys have to come in and replace a couple more tiles, so we are definitely, the library board is definitely in support of a new roof, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm on Elmore Avenue, I read the agenda last night, and I'm still wondering, what do you mean by mini split? Are you talking about splitting up office space, are you talking about splitting a banana, what's a mini split?
Air conditioning.
Yeah, it's in style, there, so, sir.
We'll go in the bedroom then.
So, um, are there any more comments, Ms. Whitney?
No more raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, I'm gonna close the podium. Welcome.
Gentlemen, if you can go out of the room and discuss that, please.
Um, okay, I guess the first thing that we want to discuss is.
I would like to request that we, I, I am in support of doing the new roof for the library. Um, I would like to get more information on the third quote, and I would like to get information on the warranty that all three are offering, so that we're very clear, because I wanted to do project well, and there is a huge price discrepancy even from the third one that we got. So, I would like to return with that item to the next meeting, just because I would like to know what the warranties are on.
Mast was fifteen, what do you, do you have?
I would like to, like, know the actual terms of that, so that, you know, again, if there is a leak, you know, what level of, you know, fix they're gonna have it. There, if it's a full warranty, you know, whatever happens, happens, right? But I, I would like to see that documentation, I would like to make.
Is it, is it, I'm in the construction industry, I'm requesting that they bring me a piece of that product that they typically offer me.
And that's just kind of sad, like, well.
That's what I want.
So, um, so I'd like to make a motion to table the decision on the new roof for the library awarding the contract to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, okay?
I'll second that.
Okay, um, well, then I'm gonna call a vote on that, because we aren't gonna spend any money. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, Peter is, Matthew?
Aye.
Aye, and Peter is abstaining, okay?
So, just a quick reiterate, I do want a new roof for the library, I'm very supportive of that, I just don't, I, again, my family owns a careful contract from Healthycare, and we've seen people come in and do a very poor job, and having to go back and redo something is much more expensive than doing it right the first time. So, I just want to make sure we're okay there.
So, so I guess if the two of you were to get together on this, between the, we got expertise.
I, I do know that Alt Trade is a reputable company, and that.
They didn't hear the bid on the roof.
We're talking about the roof, or the?
Yeah, we, we were just tabling the roof item, and now we're going to the other two items.
So, now we'll talk about the mini splits.
And mini splits are a type of air conditioning, where you have an outside heater and an inside heater, so I just had two of them installed on my place, so I'm all on these splits.
We had, uh, RayMac come in at thirty-six five seventy-eight, Alt Trades came in at thirty-nine seven ninety-four, and Myers came in at forty-six twenty and twenty-eight cents. So, now, if I see this, that, uh, Alt Trades isn't the lowest bidder, can you tell me the difference between Alt Trades and RayMac?
RayMac only did counsel and sheriff.
Alt Trade is also gonna do the fire chief's office and fire room.
So, that's the difference?
That's the difference.
Sounds good to me.
And if I, if I could, I, I would like to point out for the public that, as far as this particular room is concerned, uh, the problem we had in the past, whether it was in the winter with the heater, or during the summer with fans and nothing else, it was almost impossible to carry out business, so as far as this room is concerned, it'll make it easier for people to come here and, and rest to exist.
Sheriff? The other piece there too is COVID-related, it actually is a ventilation-type system, and they're a whole piece that we're hoping to get in with the COVID actual, uh, the one that didn't expense.
So, I don't know if you can hear it, obviously.
All right, so, um, I'm entertaining the motion.
I'll take a motion to approve the allocation of twenty-one thousand three hundred dollars.
Wait, wait, let's do the sheriffs, the, the doctor of air conditioners.
Oh, I was just gonna roll down, I mean, I don't think anybody has an issue with the Community Resource Center.
I don't think so either.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Roll, roll your way, let's roll your way.
Uh, motion to approve the allocation of twenty-one thousand three hundred dollars, so that you can. Motion to approve the allocation of $21,300 to the Community Resource Center to reimburse them for their COVID costs. And motion to award the bid contract for heating and cooling to the police substation, council chambers, chief's office, and fire room to Alltrade for the total of $39,774.
Second. Ms. Wendy, could I have a roll call, one more time?
Councilmember Lukeyzi.
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaisler.
Aye.
Mayor Brian.
Aye.
And Art has recused himself.
Okay, so we'll just, thank you, everybody. I'm sure everybody appreciates the support. I would like to say before, Steven Bryant, or Steven Bryant, I appreciate.
He's coming, he's.
Are you still on here?
Yeah, he's out there. I'm here, Dave.
I appreciate all of the good man stuff. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy to come.
Mr. Chair, if I could follow up on that. Mr. Bryant, I do want to make sure that you let everybody know out there that Dunsmere appreciates all that you and your team does for us. I think that we've, I've got the opinion from being on the board of the collaborative that Dunsmere has deep, best reputation as far as our relationship between ourselves and the resource center. The rest of the cities and the county are trying to say, how can we be more like Dunsmere? And a huge part of that is Steven and his team, so thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much.
I'm entertaining, are you there? You heard all that?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. Peter, we did approve it. So it got approved, so, yeah. We tabled, we tabled the roof.
Y'all know it's pretty good out.
We tabled, we tabled the roof item, so.
If you don't mind, I'm going to sign, I'm going to sign off, but I want to thank each and every one of you and everybody in the city of Dunsmere. We're, we make a great city working together as we do, so thank you.
You're a man, bro, you're a man.
You're a man, thanks. We're good. You're going to be part of our veteran parade in November.
Yes, sir.
I would love it.
All right. Has anybody got any items for future agenda? Go ahead.
I believe John Kenny sent us a memo about the Brown Act. So every month, we are going to have to approve a resolution stating that we're in an emergency situation with COVID, if we want to continue to use Zoom meetings more hybrid. So to allow Mayor Bryant to sign in today, we do have to do that on a monthly basis, so if we could have a resolution for the next meeting to make sure that we're in compliance with that, that would be lovely.
Well, on that point, the Brown Act allowing us to be distant, to teleconference in as long as we notice where we are, would that continue to be the case going forward then? In other words, to be, continue to use this as a vehicle for communicating, and then if somebody's out there, they could go through and post what they're going to be, et cetera?
We, so there are some suspensions, I have to take a look at the memo again. Go ahead.
I had the opportunity to go to a legal update on this topic at Cal City's conference and.
So we can talk about it.
It's evolving monthly. You know, they're going to change the law, they're going to change aspects of it, but the legislature stepping in, changing what before was just an executive order.
Yeah, so, yeah, just to have that on for the next agenda, just to make sure that we can have a fuller discussion about it. Because I do like the hybrid model, I think it allows a lot more people even outside the community to participate, and I think that's.
And then the other thing that we have for the next agenda, we will be bringing a update on our vacant distressed building ordinance.
And then we'll also have the search and screen discussion for the new city, the permanent city manager.
Yes. Anything else?
I was going to ask, so it's a very weird side project, but I've been willing to do the work. I went through some training for pollinator friendly cities, and I was wondering if I could bring an item to council about possibly leading to programming around pollinators. And I really like bees, and they just had a whole big thing about bees cannot be protected in California, about undercover, also, I'm wondering if I could bring it to a future meeting.
You certainly are there in Dolphins.
How curious is that, huh? Okay, please, please bring it.
It doesn't have to be the next meeting, but I'd like to bring it out.
We look forward to hearing your presentation about.
No, I'm still struggling with the basics around the birds and the bees.
Not that bees, no.
Hey, before we leave, I.
I was going to say, as the youngest person in this room, I don't think I should be a stingray to you, all in this time of year. But no, actual bees.
Before we adjourn, I would like to remind council that tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, Patty Doyle, I kind of hope I see you all there. We represented a town that she represented very well in her lifetime, so I think it would be, it would be hubris to be there to show support for her. But I'd appreciate it if you guys could join. And then just remember that at 6:00, if somebody can make a phone call, make sure that I got a back over the hole.
Yeah, we're going to meet at 5:00 to the level, so that at 6:00 is the next meeting.
That's probably a hack on board. You know what I'm saying?
Well, we don't have an approval for the city staff.
Well, you need to save some kind of thing, a hole.